Okay.
Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the June 23rd, 2025 Joint Crestwell City Council and Airport Commission Work Session. Would everyone join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Okay, so I just want to say that the mayor is Mayor Smith and Councilor C. Hope are not here tonight, and that's an excuse, those are excused absences. And with that, we'll dive right into the agenda and the, with committee reports. Is there anyone here that has a committee report? You have one, okay.
Such as it is.
Okay, so I don't have anything for finance and administration. So then, Public Safety Committee?
A short one. Tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m. is the next Public Safety Committee meeting, probably the last one for the year. It's going to be entirely about the upcoming National Night Out event, which will be in Hold Park on Tuesday, August 5th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. So we're going to tie up any loose ends and make any final minor changes that we might have. Things are still in motion. Just found out that Smokey the Bear should be attending, so.
He'll be busy?
Well, see, there is that potential, always.
All right.
We'll find him at the water cooler.
Any questions for Councilor Clark? If not, we'll move to Transportation and Public Works Committee. That would be, do I report? Okay. We'll move right on to the Parks and Tree Committee.
That's me.
And what will you have for us?
We met on the 10th, and we introduced ourselves to each other. There were a couple of newer people in there, and there were no, no one from the public attended, so we didn't have any comments. We did approve the other, the minutes from prior. We talked about rerouting Mill Creek past what seems to be making it unfit to eat the fish that people are catching now. I'm not real familiar with the real estate over that way, so we did talk about that. And Riley Newman is with, I think, The Water or some sort of, yeah, you know who she is.
I met her at the candidate meeting.
Yeah, I put ODFW, but I don't know that that's really who she's with, but something she's.
The Water Council?
Yes.
Name sounds really familiar.
Uh huh, uh huh. Yeah, she's very good, so she's very into it. And we were going to check if the sprinklers are on at the Garden Lake Park, and we talked a lot about that bridge that is in the works. And I need to hit Cliff up in the next several weeks to give me information, to give them an update as to what's happening with that. I'm sure he's got nothing else going on right now. And let's see, I think. See, the UFO was working on improving recreational use of, I think, Garden Lake Park, and so far they have no suggestions, anyway. The bicycle wayside has been observed to be being used, bless you. And so that's a good thing.
Good, yeah.
So that's about it. We are not meeting this summer. I guess, or I guess they don't. So September will be the next.
So there was discussion about rerouting Mill Creek?
Yes.
That sounds like a major.
Right, and I couldn't picture it because I'm not familiar with what's going on with it, but I know that by the time it gets to where people do a little bit of fishing, I think there's even a sign there that says, "Don't eat this fish."
Interesting.
So that would, that would be nice to not have to do that.
And you're all done with your report?
All done.
Okay, then next is the Airport Commission, and I will hand it over to our Chair, Kyle Busman.
So kind of the, some of the stuff we're going to talk about, the list of accomplishments for 2024, what a lot of it is, it's kind of crazy when you go back, because a lot of stuff's happening, but when you live it, you kind of just experience it. When you look back, you're like, wow, a lot did happen in 2024. And one of the major ones, a lot of it was infrastructure kind of related stuff. One of the major ones was the runway rehabilitation project. And so new surface was put down, all-new LED lighting was put down and in and tested, and it's just amazing. Everyone at the airport loves it. The transient traffic coming through has all been super happy with it and made comments on just how flat and perfect the surface is. So that was a huge one for long-term, because these runways, I mean, you could ask Shelley, but these, the last one was 30 years or something like that in place?
1984.
1984 was the last time it was done.
It's boring.
And so it's a huge deal for us, and in the future of the airport getting a good surface down. So that was the, one of the big ones. The other thing is, we do have pent-up demand for hangar space at the airport. There's users that want to come to Crestwell and take part of it there. There's other airports, Eugene and that kind of stuff, and they have commercial traffic. So general aviation, which is like small-town America pilots, they want to come to an easy airport like Crestwell, where they can come, bring their families and fly and that kind of stuff. And so one of the projects that the airport's been working on is getting new hangers built. And they have grant funding, and they've, you guys have heard maybe in different meetings where funds were put in place, but there was issues with the nymphs, I think is what it was, to get the runways down. And so the city came up, or the airport manager and the city came up with a plan to do an interim surface. So it's not, they can't put the paving down, they have to do a surface that's like a grass surface or a dirt surface that we're going to use for the taxi lanes until they can get that study done, because it's multi-years, it's three years or something like that before it can get done. But when you tie all this stuff to grant money, they have spending times that has to be spent by. And so that's kind of why there's a, hey, we've got to spend this money before we lose it, which will help with the infrastructure. So that's the taxi lane development, you'll see stuff about that. Airport security, so there was 13 security cameras that were supplied by a grant to put on the airport. Do we have a security problem at the airport? No, not really. I mean, it's there's, it's a really secure, safe place, and, but it gives the city and it gives the airport visibility and accountability all the time at the airport, so that's a good thing. That was another grant that got put in. So there's some communication stuff, the Ham Bay Station, there's the EOC, you guys hear about the EOC and that kind of project that's going. Jim, the previous chair, he's been pushing a lot of those projects and getting that stuff brought to Crestwell. It's a huge win, because you'll see, any of that emergency response stuff, it gives the citizens of Crestwell, there's thought going into them that we have these facilities, we have this stuff. And it doesn't happen overnight, and so it's a thousand little wins to where you have all that stuff. And I think that's what we're seeing with, as we're going forward with the EOC, it's all these small, intermittent, these small wins, and that's Ham Bay Station, the satellite phones, and sure does it feel excessive. It might, but when you need that stuff, you can't get it when you need it, you have to have it ahead of time. And so that's what we're seeing with the EOC, Ham Bay Station. There's been a number of grants for 2025 that were applied for in 2024 that are starting to hit, and you don't get them all. I think Shelley, there's four in this list that she applied for, and I think, did you get all four of those?
Yes.
And so she got all four of those that she applied for. And some of those, there's Security Gate. So gates at airports can kind of be a tricky thing, because you want it to be open to the public, you want people to feel welcome to come to the airport, but maintain some level of security. I mean, at nighttime, if all the users have a password to go through the gate, is it better to have a locked gate? Yes, because you don't get people wandering in there. And then you also have the public image. I mean, if people drive by on the freeway and they see gates and fences, it kind of goes, oh, there's, that's an airport. But we want it to be accessible to everyone, and so part of the plan is with these gates is to have times of day where they're open during operational hours, so anyone can come and use the airport. Security gate, there's some talk about purchase of Starlink and reconnaissance drone, and that's more of that EOC stuff about if we did have a major emergency, and one of the ODART things is the earthquake, if we did have something like that, what are useful things for us? And so that's some of the grants for those. There's some tree removal stuff. Trees grow and never stop growing, and they're on people's property, and people don't want trees cut, but for approach end of the runway, we have an instrument approach, and that's one of the things we got in the recent years, which lets you fly when the visibility's lower, which a lot of people would go into Eugene, but still having an instrument approach into Crestwell is a good thing, it gives more options. So maintaining those trees, that's one of the other grants. The biggest one, one of the hangers I have at the airport was built like 30 years ago. All the plumbing, all the infrastructure for bathrooms are put in, and now in 2024, 2025, we just got wastewater at the airport. And like for development of hangers, when people want to invest money at the airport, having running water in bathrooms is a huge one. And so that got done in 2024 and is open for people to start hooking up, and talks at the airport and talking to users and stuff is, they're going to start implementing that and using that. So that was the wastewater. There's the EPUD and DFS, there's some work just about, it's just, I think, literally about real estate, there's install of high-speed fiber optic stuff, and I think it's just crossing I-5 is where it comes into the airport, so there's some stuff going on there. There has been multiple ODART disaster exercises with Jim O., that he's editing, so you'll see what they're doing, is they're bringing goods in and out, preparing for emergency disaster and kind of pre-staging and kind of coordinating, going through all that stuff. And that's been really good, and I think it gives people a reason to fly, it gives kind of like a give-back thing that they're doing. Let's see, the Fourth of July, so giving rides for Fourth of July, inviting people to the airport. My first ride in an airplane was on an EAA chapter, Young Eagles, it wasn't at Crestwell, but that was my first ride was on one of these. And there were 73 kids that did it, registered, and 63 kids flown. And so that's a huge thing, that takes a lot of work by the airport and the users to get everyone flown. So that was a big win then. There was an open house that was held at the end of last year, kind of showcasing the wastewater and runway infrastructure improvement, so people came and it was, it rained a little bit that day, but we had a van and we shuttled people around and let them see the runway in person, see kind of how it was all done, and I think everyone was really happy with that. Jim O. and staff applied for two resiliency grants for the airport, and so that was the two large shipping containers. I think it's ended up being four in the end, but when you say shipping containers, when you see them in person, they're insulated, electrical, they're a whole pod full of the supplies that they're kind of pre-staging at the airport. And that ended up going on the north end of the airport. And they even did some cool stuff, too, for just forward thinking. They had spaced the Connex containers apart and then put overhead arches on them, so it's dry storage, so between the containers, it's not just wasted space, which I thought that was a good one. Assist with EAA chapter and school district with STEM, and so the STEM class, they did the RC build, and that got done and flown and going.
Yeah.
And that was at the EAA, EAA chapter, which is at the south end of the airport. How many people were, people were involved in that?
I think we only had about eight total.
Yeah, kids that came and helped build it.
Came, yeah, yeah. It was a challenge.
And it's funny, like the, how do you get into aviation? A lot of it starts with like, a lot of people start with RC airplanes, and they scale from there. And so, I mean, having that RC thing, it makes it real for anyone, you can see how airplanes fly, you can see the whole thing. And so that's really cool, doing stuff like that and giving back to the community. I know that there was three or four seniors at the high school that came to the airport for their senior projects, and they did various airport-related stuff for their senior projects, which I thought was really cool, kind of running to them and talking to them. And it kind of gives, because it takes, it takes a certain amount of confidence to walk to an airport and walk around. And I think if you do those activities and bring people there, it gives them that confidence that they can go to the airport, there is activities and stuff going on. The 2025, it's now with 2025, it's to construct the north, get those new taxi lanes in, which, those taxi lanes, it's taxi lanes, the sewer, the electrical, all the stuff that go with it, so that way we can start getting the buildings up, because we have a demand for rentals, and so that will get filled. Going into... So the master plan is a big, that's in the 2025, that'll be a big project. What that's used for is, it's a visionary thing, where basically it's, it's not like a set in stone, this is the only way we can operate, but what it does is it aligns everyone saying, hey, City of Crestwell, Airport, FAA, here's where we want to be, we're headed that direction. And so it takes, it's an 18-month process, doing that, developing that master plan, and how long do they run for the plan, how long is the vision on it?
Twenty years.
So it's a long-term plan, but what that does is it gives everyone the ability to position off of that. It doesn't mean that if something changed, we couldn't do something different than the master plan, but it gives like framework for people to kind of function and work off of. So that'll happen in 2025. The fiber optic lines will get drilled under I-5 and into there. The Ham Basin Station and satellite stuff will happen in 2025. There's some more EOC equipment, some purchased lighting, vertical runway crosses, aviation barricades, balloon construction lights. If the airport's closed and you have a closure, it makes it easier for, I mean, we have different ways to notify pilots that are flying in visually and all kinds, that's, a lot of that stuff is, the runway crosses and that kind of stuff are about closing the airport. One of the things we've been working a lot at, at the airport commission meetings is this tie-down policy. And with the tie-down policy, I was kind of thinking about it, and it's, you read the policy and it's like a big airport problem at a little airport. We don't have a shortage of outside tie-downs, we have plenty of tie-down spacing. And so we kind of looked at, Shelley helped gather different city airports that were bigger than us, smaller than us, how do they handle tie-downs? And we kind of worked through this list to go, what fits our airport? We're a general aviation, kind of fun, small airport, how are we going to do a tie-down policy that does that? And what the tie-downs are, if we have these open spaces and you fly into Crestwell as a user, you're going to come and golf at the golf course, you're going to come, and people fly up from Medford every two weeks to have the Crestwell Bakery, and they come in and they need a place to park. Parking's not free, it's virtually free, it's dollars, it's $3 a day, and it's a honor system. It doesn't make sense for a $3 a day pass, or day pass, or whatever you want to call it, to pay staff to go police that. And so putting good signage up, saying, hey, we have this $3 fee, and kind of communicating to that, and kind of, most pilots are honest people and they will do that, if we make it easy for them and show them that they need it, because not every airport has a tie-down policy or a payment. So that's kind of like, hey, we want to get this in place as we grow. Some of the other things were, which is a benefit to all of our local area, the wildlife firefighting stuff that's going on. So you guys have seen larger Black Hawk helicopters sitting on the ramp. So one of the benefits, and I, so I'm an aircraft mechanic, and so I worked, like went to school to be a, toward helicopters and actually went into general aviation. So all my buddies are with these helicopter crews and they're going around. Stuff they like about Crestwell is easy access on I-5, there's a hotel right down the way. They staged at Oak Ridge a lot last year, but what happened was they couldn't get airborne because of bad visibility. And Crestwell's been a pretty good spot, and so I think we'll see more of that activity. And one of the things for, there's going to, when you get more activity like that, you're going to have more people and more users and that kind of stuff, and so there's a cost to the airport to house these people when they're using the services, and there's a thing called the flowage fee. And so we don't have a Jet A truck that drives to the helicopter. So like you, it's really convenient for that, to bring the fuel to the helicopter. Well, here we have a fuel island, because we're a small airport, we don't, it doesn't, we're not in a situation where we need to pay staff in a truck. That's not as easy for them, and so what they end up doing is bringing their own fuel off airport from their different places. Well, we want them to buy our fuel, and so you have this flowage fee, and what that does is it lets the city of Crestwell get recouped for them using the facilities. So when they pump their gas into the helicopters, there's a form that we fill out weekly that we're putting in place now, that they'll pay back a certain percent per gallon back to the city. And that's a pretty standardized thing at airports that use this kind of thing. If we had a Jet A truck someday, they would use our truck and we'd just go right to them, but this is a great, kind of, solves both problems. So that's the tie-down policy, and we've kind of went through, and we have a really good example, I think, of, we don't have a problem today with tie-downs, but now we have the framework that if things change, we have something to work off of. And so we have forms and we have all this stuff that we can kind of put in place. So that's the tie-down, the big one. Preparing a finance plan for new hangers, and so there was, with these hangers, there's this, this grant money and how we get there, and it's spread out, spread out over multiple years. Well, I think there was talks about how we could, I don't want to get into the exact financial details of it, because I'm not 100% certain, but like basically it was, how do we get funding ahead of time that we know is coming, so we can get the buildings earlier? And so there was, I think that's what that point is hitting on. And then again, Fourth of July's coming up, so the EAA Young Eagles event will happen again this year and kind of keep that success rolling. I think, so if that's the 2024 and 2025 kind of accomplishments, beyond that, if there's any questions that we could help answer or kind of visionary stuff?
Do you have any security cameras on those new facilities that are coming in for the, what is it?
EOC, yeah. Yeah, so they're, the cameras, they're the, like exactly where they point and all that stuff is kind of like city knowledge or whatever, but the cover's the whole airport. They were, they pre-positioned all the cameras, so it had visibility of the whole thing. But Shelley would know exactly on the buildings, on those, but.
They're strategically placed, there's only one road in, one road out. So they are specifically set to watch the runways. The runway, the taxiway, the north and the south, and all the roads in and out. And then the resiliency hub has its own set of cameras, so it's also wired up.
And that was one thing with the EOC, like kind of there was like some misunderstanding or misinformation about, the EOC is not necessarily gathering point for the public, it's more of a staging point and a coordination point for the people involved with setting the plans for the city. It's not necessarily go to the EOC and you're going to get help at the airport, it's more of pre-presen, pre-position supplies for people making decisions, so they have a spot to do it.
It's a command center.
Command center, yeah.
There will be stuff with radios and personnel, so that if, not OSHA, FEMA comes in, we have places, we have a tent where they can put all their equipment, their emergency supplies, but we will be a staging for any emergency that happens. The hangar that we have is not insulated, it has no heater, so it would not be viable as a warming center. It's mainly there just to stage for that emergency.
Thank you.
So how much room do you have? All right, how many hangers can you put on the property now?
Well, easier question is, how many hangers do we have slated in the three rows? So the three, the three rows of hangers for the north end, what was that number?
There's two rows of traditional Ts, which will have nine to 11 hangers in that, in those two rows, and the third row closest to the freeway is going to have, I believe it's either six or seven 40 by 50 square hangers. And then the north end is fully, it will be ready for development when we get infrastructure, taxi lanes, things like that. At this point, it's really a blank canvas, which is what the master plan is going to look at. They'll look at what the forecast is and what's going on with aviation, what is most interested, is interested to the pilots, whether it's big box hangers or whether it's Rosa T. hangers. And we'll look, and they'll give us usually three alternates in the master plan, and they'll just say, okay, per standards or per what we're forecasting, this is the best way that you could develop this section. So, but the whole north end is still available for development, and you could probably do at least five more Rosa T. hangers up north, if that's the configuration that you want to go, or if you're going to go with squares, or you can do a mix of both. And then on the south end, there's the ability to do three more rows of T. hangers once we fix the taxi lane, OFA, which is Object-Free Area. The taxi lane that's in there currently is only 59 feet. New FAA standard says it has to be 79 feet, so we have to figure out the fix to make it 79 feet before we build those last three rows of T. hangers.
And kind of the, the name Hobby Field, I mean, it supports general aviation in the area, and I think that's where we're always hanging our hat, is the fun pilot, the small airplane user. We have small, light turbine airplanes that'll come in, that'll bring people for Otzen, you see the game day and those things, they'll use this airport to kind of come and go out of. But we're limited on the runway size and length, and kind of like, what do we want? I mean, that's for everyone to decide, what do we want the airport to look like? Historically, it's always been a hub for general aviation, which is just the fun flyers, the guys that are flying around just for the joy of aviation. And so that's where she's talking about T. hangers. Those are smaller, one airplane fits in versus large multi-airplane or big airplane hangers.
I just have to correct that. It's named Hobby Field.
Oh.
It's named after Walter Hoppert Seeskin, which is the original gentleman that donated the first 30 acres to create the airport. So they always called him Hobby, and so that's, it was dedicated in 1985, I believe, as Hobby Field. But yes, people always think of it as, we're a hobby field, not an aviation field.
It was a great story.
I just want to be politically correct, because there you do have family in the area.
So with, with these grants, are they specifically to build hangers?
So unfortunately, the FAA rules with the AIP Airport Improvement Program that we get, we're given $150,000 every year to use for different projects. We can't, even though it's approved, they will not allow us to build hangers. However, we were given during COVID the bill money, bipartisan infrastructure law, which is now the IIJA, they changed the name, which is Infrastructure and Jobs Act, Investment and Infrastructure Jobs Act. In that, we can build hangers, and that's kind of where we're, why we're going to turf on that north taxi lane, because the IIJA money has five-year, three limits. So our first $159,000 that we got from the federal government has to be encumbered by September of 2025, or we lose it. So in order to do that, that's why we have to move forward with the turf, we can't wait that additional three years. So we'll use one and a half out of the five years of the IIJA money to do the taxi lanes. The rest of the funding will go towards building the hangar. Jim and I have been talking, we'll probably have to add some funding, whether it be conventional, to complete the first row of T. hangers, but then we'll take that money to build the second row of T. hangers from the rents that we get, and then continue to build the third row.
So do we have, do we have people filling those hangers or applications for those?
I have 38 people on my waiting list.
And you're talking the mid-20s hangers, so you have like a demand.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're doing, we're not overproducing it.
100%.
You know, and we're going to end up putting all this money here when we could be putting it there, you know?
And the city, like the, this, like there's multiple ways to build hangers and stuff, and so like the, the city can build hangers and rent them, also private industry or private people can come to the airport, and they have long-term leases, and they can build on the property. You lease the land and you build the building, and so there's other ways to help solve that. Yeah, so there's a lot of different ways.
Have you had some of those come up?
Yeah, a lot, a majority of the hangers, I think, were built that way at the airport, is people coming, putting the money down, investing and that kind of stuff. And part of that, like if you want to get someone to do that, the wastewater and the water, having that infrastructure in, it makes way more sense for someone to spend $350,000, $400,000 to put a hangar up.
Right.
They have water and sewer there, I mean, it's one of the.
Now, the airport and the cities, they're not paying for the optics to come across I-5, are they? Are they just doing that?
So Douglas Festnet is actually on the east side already, they're partnering with EPUD. EPUD does not have a closed circuit on electricity, so they have a couple of amps, so they are drilling underneath I-5 from the transfer station. They're going to put the power on the north end of the airport, connect it all the way down to Garden Lake Park, so that they have redundancy. Douglas Festnet is pigging back, piggybacking with them to bring fiber from the north end to the south end. So yeah, it will, so it will be able to be available for all the airport users. Right now, we're on a dead end, and it's really slow.
And that's happening soon, correct?
It was out to bid, I don't remember the day that it, I think it just recently, the phase one just closed, so yes, it will be.
It's coming.
It's in the works, yeah.
So next question about that, our infrastructure, wastewater, do we have the capacity to support all those hangers?
Yes, when we built it, we started designing it at a time where we had an aircraft manufacturing company that wanted to come down from Eugene right before COVID, so we overdesigned it, so we will be able to support those.
And this is a, its own system. It's a broken way, it's all at the airport, the whole thing is developed there.
Just want to make sure we don't have to add on to something that we just put in there.
And I think one of the things about the system that was put in was, it is expandable. I mean, we put it in overkill, but the whole system was, an expandable system was, I think, one of the key points.
And our hope is that eventually, to be able to. And our hope is that eventually, to be able to tie into wastewater on the east side, once everything gets fixed. But this is a gap measure, but we've built it big enough to where we can handle the growth that we have at the airport.
Great. Any other questions?
I'm fascinated by, like, war gaming things out, or things, I saw that you had a tabletop disaster exercise last year.
Yep.
Could you speak to that at all, or just a little?
Yeah, and so a lot of that stuff, that was the ODART, and so Jim, he was the previous chair, and hundred percent knowledgeable in it, and I, so I've been around it, so what they were doing is, they're moving, they're planning moving emergency supplies, and so how can we do that? And, like, all these people have airplanes, and they want to give back and say, hey, there's airports, I can haul 500 pounds of my airplane. Well, you don't want to do that just really nearly and have people going all over. And so ODART is something that, like, organizes, plans. When you send an airplane out, did it make it? Is it there? Is there communication that it came there? Did it drop supplies? Where is the stuff needed? You can bring everything, and so I think that's, these exercises are happening yearly, and Jim's kind of fronting that and stuff, and I think it's, it's cool that he's in our area and it's included at Crestwell.
He did that two weeks ago.
Yeah, did it again two weeks ago, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it, it doesn't affect the use of the airport, doesn't shut down the airport, they do these exercises, it's just more activity kind of coming and going.
I did speak to him today, and he's looking for volunteers, so.
Yeah.
At any time, just let me know, I'll let you know when the dates are. So they bring the food in one weekend, and then the next weekend, they use small aircraft, and they take them usually to the coast, to the tribal airports, so that they can test. They also do reconnaissance, so they send planes out to check to see how bad the damage is from the storm. It's quite the event, but it's, and it's a lot of fun, but it's working out the kinks so that when a disaster happens, we're prepared.
Thank you. Are you okay with the report?
Yeah, I think I'm listening to everything, I think.
Okay. So, well, any other questions? No? Okay.
Just another comment, great work.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so, my, okay, well, with that, then we'll move down to, um, LCOG, Lane Council of Governments, I don't think we have any report for that. And Lane Act, do we have a Lane Act report?
Uh, I do, yeah, we met on Wednesday, June 11th. This was actually the, unfortunately, the third meeting in a row where we did not have a quorum, so we weren't able to vote on anything, but we did have a meeting, and it was interesting. There was a survey previous, at the previous meeting, or maybe two meetings ago, where we had asked people if we were meeting too much, or not enough, or, and everybody kind of said we were meeting maybe a little too much, so we're looking at maybe every other month instead of 10 times a year. Like, right now, we don't meet in January, because it's a newly elected and maybe not even finished figuring out who the representatives are going to be from every municipality in Lane County. So, and then we have a, July, we have a break, but in this case, it would be, you know, February, April, all the even-numbered months. So that's something that we'll probably enable next time, but we weren't able to do it without the quorum.
Without the vote.
Yeah. We did discuss things, there are still, some of the encumbered funds are dribbling in, but also a lot are not, so there's a lot of kind of stasis right now. And then there was also a discussion of House Bill 2025, which is an attempt to raise funds to work on the infrastructure, you know, fix potholes, repair aging bridges that, that are not even, are not just, not earthquake resistant, but also now have weight limits, so trucks that formerly could go across can go, and things like that. But there's a lot of things that are, like, political death for it. It would raise the gas tax from 40 cents a gallon to 55 cents a gallon. It would establish a road use fee for electric vehicles, because, you know, at the time, you know, there's no real way of determining that. But it would do that with either one flat-out fee, or they would have the choice of somehow recording the per mile. I'm not exactly sure on that, I didn't dive that deep into that part. But vehicle registration fees and title fees would go up, actually more than double.
Hmm.
So the Joint Committee on Transportation, who were, you know, working on this and shepherding it, did wind up voting, this was not at the time of the meeting, but just a few days ago, they did vote to seven to five in favor of giving it to the Oregon House to vote on. If that was to be passed, it would require a supermajority, or 60% of the representatives, which is a steep bar, so we'll see what, we'll see how that goes. Anyway, the one last thing I wanted to say about the Lane Act meeting is that there are some vacancies on there. There are some that are not specifically, a specific area, like there's Crestwell, Eugene, Springfield, Coburg, et cetera, but they have things that, like, there's, they're looking for a member to represent trucking interests. And I brought this up just because I've often found you to have really good things to say about trading.
Right.
So I wanted to let you know.
Oh, yeah.
But also, anybody else who would be interested in, just ask me or go to their website and contact somebody.
Or we'll get together and we'll talk about it more.
Excellent, excellent, thank you, thank you. And that is the end of my report.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Councilor Clark. With that, oh, any questions for Councilor Clark? Anybody? If not, we'll move down to the discussion items, which is, item A is Airport Grant Updates, and that would be Airport Manager Shelley Humble.
Attached in your packet is, I tried to make it as short and as succinct as I could, it's talking about each project that we have going on right now at the airport, where the funding is coming from, and whether or not they've been completed. So the runway rehab, it seems like it's never going to die. We have the first two grants closed, I'm still waiting for the FAA to do the final closeout for the dash 20 grant, and I am, I've turned in a reimbursement form for the Connect Oregon part of that grant. I am still just waiting for them to do their due diligence. Unfortunately, it is going to cost us a little bit of money, because some of the administrative costs came before 9/1 of 2022, legal review of the AIP grant, things like that. So it's going to cost us about $3,000 for the runway, but compared to the $3 million project, I don't think that's too bad. I was hoping to have zero, unfortunately, Connect Oregon had a different opinion. Anyway, so that one's, hopefully, we'll be able to get that done by June 30th. The dash 20, I'm trying really hard, they've had it for about six months, so hopefully we can get them to finish that up. The north taxi lane, we've been talking about, that will build two TIRF taxi lanes. Again, the reason that we're going to TIRF is because of NIMSS National Marine Fisheries Services. They are not allowing any pavement construction, because it is a fluton generator, without having to go through a bunch of hoops, so the FAA is, I know, roll your eyes, believe me, I've been there. So we've been working with the FAA, trying to find a workabout, because right now, they are so bogged down, that they're looking at 18 months before they'll even look at another case. So the FAA tried to step in, they're working on, they hired someone specifically to do a programmatic plan, which would take it out of NIMSS's hands. It has to get a buy-off from NIMSS, but even that is 15 months out, which is why we went to the TIRF. We had to do a modification to standard, because we wanted to build it as if we were putting asphalt down, I didn't want to spend all that money and then have to redesign for asphalt. So all we have to do is take up the last six inches, put down a little bit more base, and put the asphalt in once we get that all figured out. But it is taking us time. There is another little hiccup, but we're working through that, and that has to do with verbiage that was changed when they went from bill money, calling it bill money, to IIJA money. So the DOJ is working on that, so hopefully we'll have that. We're getting ready, we're almost, we're done with the final design, we're just getting ready to put it out to bid, and then hopefully by the end of summer, we'll be breaking ground. We will be taking away nine taxi, or nine tie-downs to extend the buildings, so that we have more bang for our buck. But that breaks down to, we have three core bills, core money, and then we have probably one and a half bill money, IIJA money, whichever way you want to call it, maybe two full, and then we have the three remaining bill money to put towards the hangar build, the first hangar build. So hopefully that one will be done. If we can get it constructed, then we can hopefully close it by year-end, calendar year-end, if not by fiscal year-end. The Han Bay Station, I'm in the process of ordering all the pieces and parts, the equipment. We're going to put the station right now in my office, until we can move it to a smaller office, that we're working towards. And then that'll be there for the ODART exercises, it'll be there should an emergency happen. And actually, we're buying two, so we'll have a portable Han Bay Station, and we'll have a stationary one, so we have enough funding to do that. The master plan, we have awarded it at the last city council meeting, you approved Century West as an engineering firm, we're just finalizing the scope of work, and the IFE, which is an independent financial evaluation that we have to do. Once we get those done, and we work through the hiccup with the IIJA money, we will start that process, it's 18 months, it's a big process, there's lots of public forums, there's lots of public meetings, they'll do outreach, it will be, it's a lot of reading, but it's good product. Our last one was done by the same company, it was started in 2004 and signed off in 2007. So that one is going to be interesting. Douglas Fastnet is already out for bid, they should be starting. The DVEIGA, I completed, it's on the website, we have to do that every three years. The ODF firefighting contract, we signed a contract with Oregon Department of Forestry. They will be placing a Type 1 helicopter on the north end, in an area where the farmer hays, but he already hays, so they'll utilize that field from July 11th until September 15th. So that is already in process, and we'll see them up on the north end. The resiliency hub, everything is done except for the second canopy, that should be here this week. Jim and myself are working on the, how did I say that? The operations plan, and then we'll work on finishing up the finances. The electrician has been there, getting everything wired in the connects boxes, and then EPAD should be down this week to make it light. So we'll get that done before the end of the fiscal year. The new projects, unfortunately, careful what you wish for, you may get them all. And I did. Some of them had the amounts adjusted, but I did receive all four grants that I applied for with the core. The first one is Airport Security Enhancements and Automatic Gates. That one we received last year, that's, I purchased two runway crosses, balloon lights, aviation barricades, and then we're putting an automatic gate right where the gravel starts, to secure that area a little bit better. The north end has gates, has fencing around it, so this will secure the EOC area at night, but it will have the ability to be open for the north end businesses during the day, and then they'll have a code to get in if it's after hours. So that one is in process, we're going to try and work all three automatic gates that I got grants for at the same time, so that we have a better price when we buy three versus one. The entrance, airport entrance sign, I received notice that the sign is in, and I believe it will be installed on July 10th, is the date that I was given. So that will be a colored sign, it won't be as long. I think the sign we have now is 14 feet, so it's only going to be eight feet, but it'll be a foot taller, and it'll be colored. The one that we installed originally was meant only for text, this one is more, the new times, more graphics. The EOC Security Enhancements, we have a couple of AWAS components, Automatic Weather Observation System, which is, we took an FAA grant, no, actually, that was a Connect Oregon grant, that we put in. What it allowed us to do is to get an approach into the airport, so it gives us automatic weather, so if a pilot is going to fly to Crestwell, they can get on the radio, either their airplane radio, they can call in, they can go to the website, I guess that's all the ways, find out what the weather's doing, because Eugene and Crestwell are so different on weather, especially in inclement weather. Usually, if we're open, they're closed, if they're open, we're closed, so. So there are two components that are outrageously expensive. One is like $25,000, and the two that we have installed, and I think our system is five years old, maybe six, they don't support it anymore. So we're trying to be proactive, so I went for a grant to try and be proactive, to purchase them, so that we can get them in and not have to come up with the money when it breaks. So there's two components with the AWAS, and then another automatic gate, which is going to go on the north end, so that should an emergency arise, we can just give the emergency responders the code, so that they can get in. Same thing with the helicopter being down there, we just have to give them a code instead of a key, so it'll make it much better. The EOC enhancements, going along the lines of continuing to prep out the EOC, a Starlink system, although I'm not sure that we need that now, because it came with the resiliency hub. They have their own drone, so that we can do additional reconnaissance, or we can drop off medication up into the foresty areas in Crestwell, which we learned during the Sonoma Geden, that there were diabetics that couldn't get their insulin, if we had a drone, we could always get it there and drop it. And then another automatic gate. The obstruction removal, which will be tied with the master layout plan. So during the master layout plan, one of the things they'll look at, is they'll do a survey, and they'll look to see what obstacles that are penetrating the surface, the imaginary surface for airplanes. On the south end, the north end, I think we've gotten rid of everything. We've been lucky, and EPAD has cut down the trees that were up there. But on the south end, we have private property. We've cut 30 trees, I think in 2011, but the other ones that weren't quite so tall are now tall, and I know, I think there's some in Garden Lake Park that'll have to come down. So once we, once those object instructions are identified in the master plan, then I'll work with the people to get the trees down. We do have variances from, it's not the word I'm looking for, but we have approval to go on their property to take the trees down. So hopefully, we have enough money in there to take everything that we need, and be able to do some type of landscaping for the people, giving them planting trees that maybe won't grow so tall, or maybe giving them fruit trees, things like that, to make it not so uncomfortable. The fuel contract, we have postponed until January of 2026, so we will work on that when that comes forward. And the Unicom FCC license, which is a license we have to have to have a Unicom, which is how we communicate with pilots in the air, it, what needed to be renewed, so I have renewed that. It's not due now till 32, I believe. I'll entertain any questions.
I've got a couple for the firefighting, that's going to be on the north end. So is this just going to be, they're just going to park the stuff in the grass up there?
Yes, yeah, we're going to keep up mode.
Okay. And then the second one, if they go over the September date, do they pay extra for that?
They're paying $1,000 a month, and if they go over, it'll be prorated per day.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Good job.
I have a couple, they're probably just more for clarification. Refresh my memory, what is the D B E I G A?
Disadvantaged Business Enterprise.
Okay.
Anytime you take federal funding, you have to have a policy in place to ensure that small businesses have the same opportunity that businesses do to apply and possibly receive the grant, the contract for whatever project you're doing.
Okay. And the airport entrance sign, right next to the permits received, it says tourism money.
Yes, that's why, there was tourism money that we had, that we need to spend on tourism, which is how we put the original sign in. And we had enough to be able to upgrade our sign, it was starting to glitch and have issues.
Great, great. And the, when, when do you think you might make a decision on dropping the Starlink? Were you pretty serious about that?
It just depends on money and how much money all the other pieces in that grant cost. That would be one piece that I could drop pretty easily because there is one in the resiliency pack. So we already have one, redundancy is always good, but if it means we have to take something else out that we don't have, then I'd rather take that one out because we have, we would have two and then make sure that I continue to get the pieces and parts for the other one, the drone or the gate, depending on the expense.
Okay. Interim managers. Go ahead.
I just want to clarify on the tourism. This is the, so we're, we need to spend seventy percent of our T R T on tourism-related activities. Sixty percent of it goes to the chamber commerce, to put on the Fourth of July events, the winter lights festival, citywide yard sale, the things that they're, they're under contract to do. Ten percent, it's still the city's discretion to spend. We do spend it on some, some publications to kind of encourage tourism to Crestwell through like the chain, the, not, not the chamber, the travel organ magazines. And then this is just money that we've been holding over, so it's about, so say we get sixty thousand dollars a year in T R T, so about six thousand a year, city needs to spend on tourism. These monies have been kind of holding over year over year. So when it was time to replace the, the sign at the airport to attract people to come to our airport, we put together this plan and brought it to the budget committee and the council to adopt the budget.
And to be clear, that's not the one we see from the road, right?
It is the one.
Oh, it is the one, okay.
Right along I five.
It's the red and black one, it will now be color.
Yeah, and we can play movies on it.
L E, L E D, yep.
Play the one out in front of the city.
Yeah, it's exact, almost exactly like the one.
Okay, awesome. All right, any other questions for Manager Humble? If not, you could stay right where you are, I guess, and we'll go to the next discussion item, which is the tie down policy, correct?
Correct.
Yes, tie down policy.
So before you is the draft policy that the Airport Commission is bringing to you Also included are the emails from the attorney and from the F A A. Insurance has always been a sticking point with aviation, especially G A. There's a lot of people, their age, their lack of hours, et cetera, which would make it hard for them to get insurance. So working with Ross and with Ryan Zuloff from the F A A and talking to the Airport I believe that they feel the best policy moving forward would be to remove the requirement for insurance on the transient because a lot of times you don't see them. They may come in late at night and leave early in the morning, like Kyle said, Commissioner Bushman. It's really on the honor system, so they don't always stop by the office. If, if they come into Crestwell a lot, they know the standard, you know, they'll come, they'll park, they'll go to lunch, or they'll go to a meeting, then they'll come back. So I don't necessarily see them. And if Joel's, if it's on a weekend, Joel's out mowing or doing whatever needs to happen, so there isn't always someone available for them to pay. And per Ryan Burr, who is our insurance agent, I think, I know Kyle can speak to it, removing the insurance requirement out of the transient tie down form would probably be the best course.
And kind of what we talked about, like, because every industry is different, and so most people equate cars and they go, oh, I have a car, I'm required to have insurance. Well, your boat, you go to the lake, you're not required to have insurance. You have an airplane, you're not required to have insurance. So it's not, it's a non-standard thing. With cars, we just assume that everything's standard, but with airplanes, there's no law that says you have to have insurance. So a certain percentage of people don't have insurance, they self-insure or whatever. And so for the transient people, it's like the closest analogy would be, you're going to a parking lot to do business, they don't request your insurance and all your information as you go into the store. And so that's kind of how we treated that. Where we got to the more of not sticking point, but conversation, they were kind of, what is fair and that kind of stuff, is long-term tenants, so you stay at the outdoor tie downs. And this is like a procedural thing where we don't, we don't have a shortage, we're not trying to generate a huge profit off of this, we're just trying to put infrastructure in place. It's three dollars a day or thirty dollars for the month. Well, requiring someone to have insurance for that might make it a hundred dollars a month for the insurance and thirty dollars a month for the spot. Well, if it's not like an accepted law that people have to have insurance, now we're kind of like, well, our transient parking lot scenario or outside storage, which isn't ideal, it kind of puts us in this pickle of what do we do? And so how do you, what's the best way to move forward? So that's what we're kind of telling you, I'm trying to give you some comparisons.
So currently it is not in the transient tie down form. The only thing that is spelled out is it says indemnification. Operator agrees on his or her own behalf and on behalf of the owner of the aircraft, if other than operator to indemnify and hold the city and the city's agents and employees harmless from and against any and all liability for injuries or property damage resulting from operator issues of occupancy of aircraft parking space. The monthly tie down fee currently still has it in there. And that's probably the biggest discussion for tonight, especially.
The buildings and stuff, when you get a hangar at the airport, and so you get one of these hangars, we talked about building or pre-existing, there is insurance requirements that you have to have, general liability policy with a certain amount of slip and fall and that kind of stuff. Now we have these buildings or these things. And so you get to the outside tie down spot and it's like, you have your airplane parked there and it's still this weird area of, do I have a slip and fall policy for my outside tie down? I mean, it's kind of a weird thing and so, yeah. We, our kind of take on the whole thing was, the spirit of the tie downs is ease of use and trying to be realistic on what we can do. And requiring a policy and insurance and stuff that someone has to track down, it starts to overcomplicate things. And I think the city carries liability, just like all the businesses and everyone, if you park in the parking lot, there's a certain amount of liability if someone slips and falls at the airport in general. And so is it now like so many layers deep that it becomes, we can't, people can't operate? Because now, and so that's kind of where we're in this sticking point or just conversation.
So the big question is, it would be number nine on the long-term policy. Most tie downs are not commercial general, they're not commercial anyway, they're usually private. We would still require the fire bases to have insurance, they will anyway because they're part, usually part one thirty-nine. And they'll have contracts with either warehouse or O D F and they are already required to have liability insurance. So they are required to have it in our policy. It's just this paragraph right here, and if you read Ross's comments, He, in his last, his last sentence, he says, given the marketplace for aircraft insurance and aircraft, and, sorry, an insurance obligation for tie downs might be unrealistic even if it would be a good idea.
And we, when we looked at the tie downs, we thought, we tried to think about every scenario, like, there's, there's talk about like, if you're going to do like commercial use in the tie down, we're not going to, like, these are parking lot spaces and so it would be like, one of the things we talked about is no maintenance in the tie downs, we discussed that there's possibility your airplane could have a small issue and you need to be fixed, that's realistic. But can you rent a thirty dollar a month tie down? Can I go to Sears and use a parking spot to do mobile maintenance? Not a lot's not what we want for the tie downs, they're parking spots, they're just kind of transient temporary use or outside storage. And so we kind of addressed a lot of that stuff in here too. But like we said, we don't have a tie down problem, this is all future planning.
So question, do you supply anything for the tie downs?
Yes.
Like the anchor?
Yeah, so in here it talks about, and that's a geographic thing, where we're at, we don't have plows, and so we don't snowplow. A lot of airports don't have chains, don't have anything, they just have a metal hook because they snowplow. Here we have chains, and one of the things we talked about in the policy is, hey, the city's providing these chains, you can't modify them, use them, here's your tie down spot kind of thing.
Okay.
And then there's some other, go ahead.
So I noticed for the long term, you have both indemnification and insurance. What would be in the insurance that would be covered with indemnification that I'm agreeing to indemnify the city?
What would insurance cover, you mean?
Yeah, I, because.
Like, is the, is the first thing good enough to cover it anyways? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, basically.
And I, and that's kind of, and that's some of the stuff where like, we were looking at it like, what is standard, what's normal, and then what's the other side of the coin? And that's kind of why we message the, the insurance guy and that kind of stuff. And I think that we could, with that statement and that kind of sign off, I think that covers us. And then any other liability the city carried, if they trip on the fuel farm over there, I mean, it starts to be there's, there's liability somewhere for everyone all the time, like.
So the insurance would only carry a liability should they do something to damage property? The indemnification would still be there to indemnify and hold harmless, city, the city or city staff, city council, city employees?
Anyone else have any questions or thoughts?
Well, it makes sense to me to remove it, because for, for the short term, you know, the insurance can't be mandated, so how can we mandate it and regulate it and be the insurance police for, you know, like Manager Humble said, for a one-night stay, you might not even see the person anyway. It makes sense to me just to remove it.
I agree.
I agree.
Those are my, my thoughts.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to, to get at too, it's just, it seems like, you know, the amount that they would have to pay on a monthly basis just to be able to do that, seems like it could be enough to discourage use of our facilities.
And it's the, the, those spots are readily available and like, as things change and the city grows, these policies and stuff, having this framework in place, we can tweak, tweak it to be exactly what fits. And there is some light commercial activity where people use spots for flight training and that kind of stuff, and we address and we talk about that stuff in the policy.
So do they have to show you like proof of insurance for it?
So traditional hangars, it's where it's this like parking lot versus building scenario, all the hangars are insured, everything's insured there, but now we've got this transient space and how do we do that? And so we're in this kind of gray area.
Something happened with, let's just say a plane out there and, you know, it's just down there getting, the tie down area. And for some odd reason it blows up, and this blows up all these other ones that are close to it.
Sure.
You know, what happens at that point? I mean, because if we're not making them have insurance, how do we make sure that they get covered?
So the big thing would be, it'd just be like on the lake, if I tie up next to you on the lake and there's no requirement to have it there, it'd be the same scenario. It would be on the person that had the airplane and the thing that caused the damage to pay.
Like nearly all of us have aircraft insurance, so if I wreck my airplane, my insurance will cover the damages. It won't cover my airplane necessarily, but.
And that's where I, I think it's kind of hardware, you know, if somebody comes in and they parked their plane and something happens, and now it's just this person, but this person doesn't have, like, it's just us.
You already carry the liability because everyone that's flying and using the airport, they potentially don't have insurance either, there's no requirement for them to have it. So it's not like you're accepting any new risk, it's already the, and I do, I do agree that insurance is a good thing and trying to cover that is a good thing. Specifically with the tie downs, we were trying to look at it in a realistic view of thirty dollars a month, and if the insurance is, insurance is a hundred, two hundred dollars a month for the policy, does that make sense? That kind of thing. And we wouldn't be the only airport, like, it's not like we're an outlier, we looked at several airports and made comparisons.
It's not, I mean, it's nothing like saying that things are right or wrong, it just does not seem right for myself that if someone blows up my car, car next to it, you know, you know, they don't have insurance, well, then we're just all kind of screwed.
Well, they just personally liable.
An insured motor.
There is, but at the same time, it's just like, there's no, like, you can't guarantee that that person's got insurance, so you're going to have to go take them there or whatever.
Yes, yeah.
So I mean, and that, I think it just, it's hard to accept that, you know, somebody's at fault, that they don't have some type of accountability for it, you know?
Well, and they, I mean, these people too, I mean, like, the aviation is an expensive thing, and so, and some people in some of these scenarios where it's too expensive to insure, so they do a thing called self-insuring. And so they're self-insuring the airplane, if anything happens, they're self-funding it.
Do they sign something?
Well, they're choosing to do that, and so it's kind of a choice that they choose.
Is that a responsibility that the plane owners sign or some kind of acknowledgement?
It's not a law, it's not a law, so they can just choose, it's your freedom to do that, there's no law.
And we can force them to have insurance. The F A A has established that long ago, that you cannot mandate that anybody that flies in and out of your airport has insurance.
Okay. Well, then it's like hands down.
Yeah.
It's like slam dunk right there.
Unfortunately, it's such a great area, but it's, it's a real hard area. The transient, I can see it's a no-brainer because sometimes you don't even see them. The tie downs, I think most of them that we have have commercial, if they're commercial, anybody that's commercial on the airfield has insurance. So if it's a flight school, they have the slip and fall that they need to have. It's just the ones that come in, maybe are here for the summer. And maybe he's eighty and he's going to teach his grandsons how to fly, but he just chooses or he can't, and insurance companies are really finicky as you get older, trying to get coverage, any type of coverage. And most, it's really hard to get just a liability policy versus they really want the moneymaker, which is the hole, which would be the collision. And a lot of people just either don't have the money and, you know, it's, it's kind of a misnomer to say that all aviators are rich. There are some that that's just their passion. They drive an old beat-up truck that they've had for fifty years because every free penny they have goes into their airplane. So some of them, there's a lot of them out there that do not self-insure, or that do self-insure, that don't carry liability. And it's not, I'm not able to go up and ram people and say, I want to see your insurance.
We have a question from the audience.
Well, no, just a comment that it's basically whether it be home, on the water, a boat, a motorcycle, a vehicle, an airplane, it, it becomes a civil action at that point because uninsured or choosing to be self-insured is basically choosing not to maybe cover insurance or. or maybe do cover insurance. But the liability is the end result, not the ongoing coverage.
And I would assume devil's advocate, worst-case scenario, something happens, they come to the city and we have to turn it into our insurance company, then our insurance company would go after that person.
And the, there's nothing that says you can't have your own policy. And so if your airplane's on the ramp and the airplane hits you next to you, you have a policy for that.
Yeah.
And so you can...
And they would do the same thing, they would go after the person at fault.
Well, and there is the indemnification clause and understanding, so it's between the two, it's, basically, they're on their own.
Yep.
I think if it were a huge litigious type of thing, you'd have all heard about it by now, that, don't go to a small airport or watch out for people with planes.
Sure.
Yeah, and I believe that's why it's not mandated.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah. That's my comment.
Anyone else have any other questions, suggestions, comments? If not, I believe that covers our last agenda item.
Do you guys have any questions on the rate sheet for Firebase? This is one of the drivers that were for the tie-down policy because we have become Firebase the past several years, but we had no way to collect the fees that we were missing to help with the upkeep because they are heavier aircraft, so they do do, they can do more damage to our tech, our apron. And so we want to ensure that we could get the fuel flowage if they're going to use their own equipment, or that we get the appropriate tie-down fee for the type of aircraft.
We're looking at Firebase Aircraft Fuel Flow Accounting Form?
Yeah, and the transient parking fees. Two pages. Well, there's three. There's Attachment C that's got three pages. So, the first one explains what it is, what they have to do, and then the rest are the attachments that go with that. And it is standard practice. In here, it does say that if they fill up with fuel, the day that they fill up, we will waive the tie-down fee. We make more money in the markup on the fuel. Most of them take 300 gallons, so we'll make up the markup and give them that night. And that's standard practice across most airports.
So, the ones that are gonna be on the north end of the, for the fire, are they gonna have their own tie-downs, and we don't have to supply that?
No, and they'll be completely separate, and they're paying $1,000 a month.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a whole separate contract. They wanted to be guaranteed a spot. They want to be able to pick it and do the best. And it's really a good spot for them because then they'll have separate entrance, and they shouldn't interfere with any of the aircraft traffic.
Are you gonna get some fuel from them?
Fuel flowage fee, yes.
Okay. Are they just one helicopter, or they're gonna have a...
It's a type one, yeah, so it's one of the big ones.
And is there, and their, sorry, and their transient tie-down fee is tied into the contract?
I believe so, yes. I'll have to double-check, it's been a while since I read it.
And all the rates and stuff were, like, they're, they're all reasonable. They kind of looked at a broader scale of rates and stuff. Having a Firebase at Crestwell is a good thing for Crestwell, having firefighters local to you, supporting you, right on the I-5, seeing that stuff, it's a good thing. And so this is all just a building block that we have. We're a small-town airport, but it gives us a building block as if this changes, we have a mechanism to kind of adapt to. Is it what, is how I look at this whole thing.
And we have a committee that looks at rates and charges every year, if they want, so we'll get it.
Any others? Questions, thoughts, comments? Do you have anything else for us, Manager Humble?
I will take out number nine, and it will come before you guys for adoption at the next city council meeting.
Commissioners, you feel good about bringing this to council?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you, guys, for all your work on this. And if there's no other questions or comments, the next item is adjournment. Meeting's adjourned.
You didn't slam that hard enough.
I did, I lifted.
Sorry.